It would be helpful to get the people most involved in the finances of the town to talk tonight, just some concerns, you know, questions, what your perspective is from your various committees, what you're seeing for our next fiscal year. So we're going to start with the operating budget. And Erica, as Chair of the Finance Committee, I don't know if you have any, if you all have had any early conversations yet? If you wanted to share any thoughts that you have, I'm gonna, basically what I was thinking I would do was ask Finance Committee and then Capital Planning and then have the town administrators or, you know, give her perspective on everything and then we'll open it up to more of a discussion. So Erica, I don't know, do you have any first thoughts on, from the Finance Committee perspective?
So we had met a couple weeks ago before Thanksgiving and had asked Denise that we're hoping during this budgeting process to also sort of get a better picture of what the next five years could potentially look like as far as any projects they see coming down the pike or, you know, any increases that they're already sort of aware of to just sort of give us a heads up. We're sort of hoping to be able to forecast out a little bit as we have some of these larger projects that are coming into play. It would be great to be able to sort of plan a little bit better around that. But other than that, that's the only initial conversation we've had about this.
Right, right, no, that makes sense. And capital planning, and actually, while we're at it, since I'm not sure I know everybody who's on Finance, are other members of your committee are on the call? I can't remember who's, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, there is. So Brian Pachuto, who's on the Finance Committee, is here with us. And Evgenia Petrova, who has just joined the Finance Committee a couple weeks ago, is also here.
Great, great. Awesome, great, thank you for joining us tonight. Capital planning, Steve, I assume that's you bouncing around on my screen, there you are.
Yeah, that's me. Yeah, so before we get too far, I believe we have pretty much everybody on capital planning here tonight. Ed DeLuca, Pete McManus, Missy Reeves joining us as an Associate to Sure. I assume Zach's there, I don't see him.
Yes, he is.
There he is, okay, he's there. You know, we haven't started meeting yet. We haven't even sent out the updated information for capital requests this year. I could talk about what we had in folks' plans, what they gave us for plans for last year. If anybody remembers, we actually shared a pretty big number for next year at town meeting. You know, three something million dollars. And the big ticket item there is the Lake Boone Dam repair at something like two and a half million dollars. So everything else in the plan that folks have given us as far as plans is concerned are more or less what we typically, you know, expect for typically here. Although, you know, the Highway Department has a bunch of vehicles they were planning on replacing, you know, this next year, so. I have, I have no other information than what I, what I shared at the town meeting.
Okay, well, that's, that's a place to start. We'll, we'll get more into that and that, and that will tie in also to our discussion on the ARPA funding, which Denise will give us more about in a little bit. So Denise, do you have sort of just initial thoughts on how you look at this next year's budget?
I mean, obviously I have thoughts, but before I start that, I wanted to ask Steve. So I am rolling out a new online budgeting program that has a capital budgeting component. If you'd like, I can have the capital requests submitted online that will automatically do sort of the five years and put everything in spreadsheet format for you. And I can just give you a login to see the requests, or if you'd like to do it the way you've been doing it, whatever you prefer. But this new online budgeting does have a capital budgeting component.
Yeah, I'm happy to do less work.
Okay, so I'll, I'll include this because then it actually, it's good. It will do some charts and graphs and it'll really let us, you know, hold things over from year to year and do some projections. So I will include that when I send everything out this week. What is your deadline for, or what would you like your deadline to be for capital projects?
We generally tell folks to try to get stuff in by the end of the calendar year. And stuff always kind of bleeds over into January, we end up chasing people down. But, you know, we try to make it coincident with them submitting their, their operating budgets as well. So, you know, it's, it's all in that same schedule.
Okay, perfect. So I will do that. Yeah, I mean, we're looking at, you know, this year, the trend from other communities seems to be a little more positive than the last few years, especially in terms of COLA. Communities that either have not given out a COLA or given a low COLA seem to be increasing it this year. I think everyone recognizes what the municipal employees have gone through over the last few years and are trying to recognize that through a cost of living. So I am probably going to stay on par with many of the surrounding communities. I don't expect a lot of, you know, big changes or any surprises in the operating budget. I mean, we've talked about trying to really budget where we should be. For instance, I've discovered that our Facilities Department covers town building and Pompo, but not police, highway, and the library. They budget for their own facilities maintenance. Well, that doesn't make sense to me. I want to streamline everything into one facilities budget. We have a Facilities Department that should be overseeing all the facilities, making sure all the fire alarms are tested at the same time. So there may be some movement as far as funds being moved around. But I wouldn't expect a lot of changes. When we, you know, we'll go through some other things later on that will help account for some of our changes. I think the, some of the big things that, you know, to Erica's point, what's coming down the line, I think probably the biggest is the Fire Department would like to apply for a SAFER grant to add three full-time firefighters to their roster. The grant would cover 100% of their salary and benefits for three years, and then it would be on us. So that will be a large expense if we choose to A, apply for the grant, and then B, keep these employees at the end of the three years, which I can't imagine that we would not. The feeling is with all the new construction happening, with the private academy coming to town, the chief feels that he really needs to have full-timers on every shift so that the, there is a response available. So if both ambulances need to go out, he has people on shift. If a fire engine and ambulance go at the same time instead of waiting for that response. So that's something we really will need to look at and decide, you know, if that is an expense that we feel is a benefit. I, I tend to think it is. I think the Fire Department that we have as a call model is a bargain for communities that it works in, and I do think it works here. And I think this is probably what we need to do for the next, you know, number of years to keep us at this call model so that we're not going to a more full-time basis. We have four firefighters, again, through some other methods, we're looking at adding a diff, an additional one. And then this would be three, so we would add four more so that we'd have eight full-timers. That's probably the biggest thing I've seen coming down the line. Obviously, that, that will be significant. Other than that, I, I don't expect anything crazy. I have not sent out the budget packages yet because I'm trying to still get this software up and running. I'm going back and forth with the company, making some tweaks with our accounts. Because we do so many articles, it was a little difficult to try and get the art, all those special articles in the system so that people could, the departments could request their additional article money. So that again, when we run the projections, it's all in there, it's all together in the same book that's printed out of the software. So hopefully, they're, they told me they'll get that done by tomorrow, then hopefully I can roll everything out. But yeah, I haven't, like I said, I haven't heard of anything. No one's come to me and, you know, has any crazy ideas or crazy plans, so we'll see.
So headcount wise, you except for the Fire Department?
Yeah, I don't expect, I mean, I still, I still am trying to evaluate facilities. I think that's one that we need, need to look at with what we are providing and the amount of space that is required. Again, we've spent a number of years that certain buildings were excluded from facilities as far as cleaning services. So now that we've added some of those buildings and some of those necessities, you know, it may require additional staff. I don't think, I don't think we'll be adding full-time people. We may be increasing hours here or there, or maybe going from a part-time to a full-time. But I, I don't really see, I think the Highway seems to be a good place. The police, now that they're fully staffed, we have some promotions on next week's agenda to really get them back to their full complement. But I don't envision, unless it's something I'm not aware of, really additional staff.
So questions from the board on, I guess, let's focus on the operating side first. Either questions from what Denise just presented or thoughts you all have individually about this coming year, concerns, whatever.
When, the school, the high school, when is that on?
The high school project? Yeah, like, so, when I, the last time I looked at the timeline, it had the vote next fall. So fall of 2022 in fiscal '23. Now, I think Ellen, was it you that mentioned that you had talked to someone and it was, they said it wasn't until '23, but when we looked, it was really fiscal '23? I think I was meeting, was I meeting with you? Maybe Erica, I don't know, one of you were talking.
I was gonna say, that was me.
Okay, okay. So unless they've updated their timeline, it looks like they're planning, or they're planning to request a special election at town meeting next fall.
Okay.
I have a meeting with, I have no information from the school. We're meeting, they canceled our November meeting, so we're meeting the week before Christmas. Actually, I think we're meeting the week of Christmas. Our last meeting, we tried to set some expectations as far as the school budget goes. My primary concern was the fact that we don't receive spreadsheets. Everything we get are PDFs and we can't see formulas and they pushed back. So we will continue to harp on that. The three towns expressed how important that was for us to get the actual data. And they seem to be afraid of what we'll do with the data and who will see the data. So I, I told them it was a real sticking point for us and it's not going to start off on a good foot if we're, right off the bat, we're not getting information that we've, at least now that I've requested for a year and I know the other two towns have continually requested.
These are all public documents, I just.
Well, yes, but when I said I would submit a FOIA request, they said there's no requirement that we have to provide it in an Excel spreadsheet. We can provide it to you in a, in a PDF.
I mean.
So I came right out and said I would request it.
If it exists, I've played that game. If, if it exists in a form, and then they have to produce it in that form. They don't have to create a new form.
Correct, yeah, I mean, I agree. And I said, they claim they've talked to other school districts that have had issues and I recommended they speak to the school district I came from that would send me anything I wanted because they believed in transparency and sharing information and having a collaborative relationship. I thought we were going to enter that, but they definitely pushed back right off the bat, so we'll see.
There's not been a very good culture of transparency with the school system for a while.
And I thought it's, that was sort of the promise that it was going to change, so we'll see. Like I said, we'll see what happens in December and what they start to provide us. But the three of us made it clear that that's not acceptable. We want the, we want the data, we want to see the formulas, we want to be able to, you know, trace the numbers and figure out how they came up with the assessments and actually see what makes up the, the numbers that they're giving out.
So this goes back to, you know, that tri-town committee that we used to have particularly around budget season. And do you feel like, I mean, given that that's the three town administrators are meeting with the district, is there any reason for us to try to schedule a tri-town meeting to discuss the budget, or is that?
So if I ca, I mean, I think the benefit to tri-town, in my opinion, would be sort of a one-night meeting.
Right.
And that should be when the budget is presented to the three towns simultaneously. Because one of the complaints that we have is the night that, I believe it was Brooke came here and presented, was the same night that someone else presented in Bolton and we got different information. And I feel like, you know, that will happen depending on who goes where and what the climate is in that environment. So I think if we had a sort of true, I mean, all the select boards meet on the same night of the week. If we, oh no, actually not anymore, I think Bolton is Thursdays.
I think with the advent of Zoom, there's no reason for us not to.
Right, why not do that?
But we could have a like budget tri-town that all Finance Committee members, the Select Board, and the town administrators, and the school can do a presentation.
Yep. Everybody, absolutely.
So that everyone sees the same information and there's no secrets and there's no, you know, I'm telling you something different. So I, but I don't know that we, you know, and that obviously could turn into a question and answer period, but I don't know that the true tri-town experience needs to happen anymore.
No, and I mean, that does go back to why there was a tri-town, it was just to try to get that information and it was all at the same time.
Well, and having not been in another administration here, I feel like Denise is doing a very good job making sure that she's talking to the other two town administrators and making sure that that information then funnels down to us. So I don't know that like having me or one of the other members sitting with other Select Board members in a tri-town format makes sense because I do feel like we would get that information from Denise, but.
But the Finance Committee needs to hear it as well. I mean, the tri-town wasn't just Select Board members, it was Finance Committee members and School Committee members, not in your version?
Not in my version, it was, no.
It's theoretically.
Yeah, that's what, I mean, that's what it used to be.
That's not what was happening.
But, so I would just, I would encourage you to encourage that plan, you know.
Right, well, I, you know, I attend all the Finance Committee meetings, so I can certainly facilitate the same information to them. We do have a set schedule that we are meeting every month. We have that, like I said, with the exception of November because they screwed up October. But so I, I'm confident that we will meet, you know, regularly, again, what we get. But we, we, you know, we are quite candid because it's really the four of us sitting, sitting in a room together. So, you know, we're not shy.
Um, any other, yeah.
Just a clarification question Denise, on the SAFER grant, it is three more no matter what for three years? So there's no like one or two?
No, they could be up to three.
Up to three, got it.
Yes, I believe, I believe it's up to three. And I will say that the early thoughts are that the SAFER grant is going to change. So we, the thought would be to get in now while it's 100% for all three years. The plan, I believe, is it starts at 100%, then goes to 80%, then goes to 50%, then you're on your own. So if we wanted to take this opportunity, now would be the time while they would cover the full 100%.
So if we applied, would it be for the next, it would start?
No, it would still be in this cycle with 100%.
Okay, but, but for the fiscal '23, I mean, is that roughly when they would start? Like, we, when, when would we hear about the grant, I guess?
I don't know, but I believe it was for fiscal '23, yes.
Did we apply for that maybe eight to 10 years ago?
Yes, I believe so. And did we get it?
Do you know how many we got?
I don't know, but I know we've applied.
Does it sound familiar?
It sounds like a good deal, I mean.
And just continuing to clarify, so we would then pay for those employees three years later?
Yes, well, in year four, so in year four.
So, so '27?
Yes.
But isn't the idea?
Twenty-eight.
No. Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six.
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 Yes, because if it started with 23, yes.
I was gonna say, isn't that the idea, like, that we would be slowly scaling up with that grant money for the three years in anticipation of us possibly having to increase the Fire Department? And the, I mean, is that, is that a valid projection to start making?
It is, but there's no way, you know, because it's operating funds, there's no way to, like, we can't air market and put it in the Fire Department budget so that it's a placeholder because then we're occupying funds over the next three years. So we have to.
Got it, so then, okay, so then in three years, okay, I see.
So we can certainly, you know, as I look at what we're increasing, you know, I can make a mental note of, okay, over the years, you know, let's make sure we have this money set aside, which, again, I'm confident that we will.
Right, right.
But there's no way to sort of put it in now as a placeholder so that we don't get hit all at once. Or, you know, incrementally add it to a budget because then they'd have more money in their budget.
Got it, okay.
Any thoughts about, and I don't want to belabor this because it's the operating budget and I, I don't see it as being a question for us anyway, but I'm just curious, is there any thoughts about how attrition might, might affect that?
I don't think it will. You know, if we had 20 full-timers but with four, I don't see that we'd have that situation. And I do, I mean, I understand that it's the operating budget, but I feel like this is almost a philosophical discussion of where the board feels the Fire Department should be. And, you know, if you support the idea of sort of staying in this, you know, hybrid model with mostly call, then I think, as I said, in order to sustain this model, I think we do need to add people so that we're guaranteed that there are people to respond when someone picks up the phone and calls 911. We're very lucky, we have a very dedicated department. But there are times that, you know, we do have multiple calls out, we have mutual aid going on. And, you know, being able to have folks that we know are here, we know are on every shift, I think is the next logical step for the department anyways. Again, in order to allow us to maintain the call model indefinitely, I think this would just add that consistent service.
Yeah, I, I find it, having just, when I, Veterans Day, when I get to talk to JP about like what the actual shifts look like, because I realized I didn't really understand it. And it's, it's remarkable that we lasted this long, we have so, such a number of people willing to serve as call firefighters. So it does seem like, with knowing that, you know, Stowe Acres is moving for it, I mean, not immediately, but we'll have housing there and then, as you said, with the academy and.
Well, and Athens Lane and Plantation, and, you know, there are housing developments that use more resources just by nature that we have that increasing. And actually, everything that's going in theoretically would have a senior housing component so that, you know, again, by nature, it's just medical calls will increase. And we have the two ambulances, we normally only use the one, but if we had two people there and we needed to send two out with, you know, while a call firefighter, EMT was on the way, we would have that ability, so.
Any other questions on operating? We can, I think capital's gonna be more. So do you, I mean, the ARPA money is one big part of what might help us with the capital projects as Steve has laid out, that there's a lot coming up. So maybe you should talk about how, your sort of early thoughts on how we might use the ARPA funds and we can talk about how we move forward on that.
Sure, so I really, I mean, I haven't given a lot of thought to ARPA because I do feel that that's a larger discussion. Before the board this evening, I have, I will be asking you to just appropriate or allocate some funds just to get us going. So we have received $2,162,292 in ARPA funds. We've physically received in hand half of that to date. The second allocation is coming, I believe, next June or July. As I mentioned in our last meeting or a few meetings ago, I hired a consultant to help us with this process. She went through and used the Treasury guidance to calculate what was considered our loss revenue for fiscal '19 to calendar '20 as a result of the pandemic. And she has calculated that at $1.4 million and change. And there is an escalating factor in there, so it's not that we took in less money. We actually took in almost the exact same amount of revenue, but when you use the escalation factor that the Treasury has provided, it allows us that $1.4 million. What that means to us, excuse me, is when the ARPA guidance came out, the $2,162, they were very specific on what it could be used for. And it was those specific categories that we talked about at the last, let me just pull it up if I have it here, at our last meeting, water and sewer infrastructure, obviously COVID response, negative impact, negative economic impact to the communities, administrative costs, broadband, things that would really benefit communities that, quite frankly, are probably less fortunate than we are here in Stowe. You know, cities are getting huge funding to roll out COVID testing or provide resources for the negative economic impact or the, the cities and towns out west are, you know, increasing their broadband, broadband access. We're lucky in that aspect. And obviously, as a sewer and well community, we don't have water and sewer projects other than PFAS. So I mentioned to you that I would like to use a piece of that for the ongoing PFAS project, so we're not going to town meeting for another article just yet. But really, what this lost revenue means is, the Treasury guidance has said that that can be used for any governmental purpose with the exception of stabilization, retirement allocation, and there's one more.
Debt service.
Debt service, yes, thank you. So it can be used for all, for anything else. So I believe, you know, there will be, I, I mean, Steve mentioned the dam. We could sit here and discuss that we want the majority of this to cover that project and then we're not going to the taxpayers in a debt exclusion, we're not, you know, trying to fit some of these things in our budget. Those are things that this board is the ultimate say on how this money is spent. Obviously, there are a number of projects that we could include. We could use it for capital expenses, we could use it for, again, anything. We could apply it just against our, we could just add it to our budget so it falls to free cash and we could say, well, we're making up for lost revenue from last year. We do, we did get free cash certified at just over $2 million, $2,490,000. So we have those funds as well that are usually how we fund capital. And right now, with the exception of our transfer to stabilization and our transfer to OPEB, which I may look at, maybe we increase that a little bit on the free cash side because we have these other funds to, you know, cover other capital items. So, you know, we're really talking, you know, $3.5 million of money that could be used for any purpose between the free cash and this $1.5 million. So, you know, that will be a larger discussion of, you know, is now the time we want to replace some of this equipment that, you know, might be on the capital plan for two years down the line? This ARPA fund, we do have a few years to use it, so we don't need to make all these decisions and use it all at once. But it, it certainly plays into, you know, what we choose to spend and, and how we choose to spend it with capital and infrastructure and really anything else.
So one thing that I talked to Denise about this whole, the, the lots of options around the ARPA money and except for this motion that we're gonna deal with tonight, that, that we talk about having a representative from each of the three committees, the Select Board, Finance, and Capital Planning, to meet with Denise to sort of hash through, rather than having all three committees meeting. As she said, the Select Board is the one that has to make the final vote, but I think I can speak for us that we'd like to get the input of all the, the relevant committees, that we would have like a working group, which I, everybody knows I don't like that term, but, but it is the right way, I think, to go in this case to, to really hash through some of the ideas that, that are floating around just to see what we want to recommend to spend the ARPA funds on at this point or in the next six months, I guess, I mean, in the rest of this fiscal year. So that's something that I think, I don't know that we can make that decision tonight, but I guess I'm asking the, the other two or all three committees to, to discuss that and see if that seems like the right, right way to go on, on that process. Do we, do we want to talk about your specific motion now or?
It's up to you.
I guess I'll ask the board, do you guys have questions or comments around the ARPA money? Or how to even, just either clarifications or just, you know, thoughts and initial thoughts on where we should spend it?
Ellen, you have a hand raised.
Oh, I have a hand raised. Oh, Ed, go ahead.
I, I think that one of the things you should do is ensure that you're spending the money on a project which you know you would have spent money on anyway, right? And that, once you've made that decision, it's kind of not very controversial because then the money is fungible. It's like we spent this money, we spent that money, but, you know, but it's money that we were intending to spend. It's not a speculative thing, it's not a controversial thing. It's something that, and those are fine, I, I agree. But, but I think, you know, just do it on something that is, that is fairly robust and fairly long-term and, and you know you wanted to spend that money anyway on, on the taxpayer, so here's another, another taxpayer source of revenue.
One comment on the working group thing, just to throw in my two cents. If we appoint someone and they are going to meet with Denise and someone else appointed by the other two committees, I would think that we are tripping the open meeting law. But if we just say, hey Denise.
Pull some people together.
Pull some people together.
Yes, that's the plan.
That was the plan.
I just wanted to be sure that the groups felt, you know, that's, for instance, if I pull Steve into the mix, that he can, you know, represent his whole committee in some of our narrowing down of projects, that he can, you know, say, yes, we think this will be a good project and that, that they think that the other committees and this one thinks that that would be a good way to sort of narrow things down. Because I do, as I, you know, I do think we will, if, when, when, when I put something out to boards and departments, I think we will get significant project requests. And, I mean, they've already come in, I've already gotten them from boards that hear that there's money available and, you know, what can we do and what can we spend and how much money can we have? So I think to have a group sort of vet some of these projects and then have this, the, the smaller town administrator group, then put something forward to the full committee and say, here's our recommendation, I just think would streamline things instead of every committee, every committee having to meet to go through these projects, all the projects.
I think that I like that idea. But I do think that I, I don't want things to get weeded out that are. that are possibly like forward looking, like a little more pie in the sky. We got this money, let's spend it because we have the money to spend on the projects that we know about. Or we've been budgeting for those, but this money is just different money. Like I would also like to see those kind of proposals as well as the sort of safe ones. So I just wouldn't, to just to Ed's point, like I get, I totally understand what you're saying about, you know, wanting to fund the projects that we already know about that are coming down the pike. That is a, that is a smart way to look at it for sure. But I also feel like this is money that we could use that we've had to like not be able to touch certain projects. And maybe that's, maybe those are the ones that I would also like to see.
No, I agree. I think this group should see everything.
Okay.
You know, all projects, here's what's recommended, here's what was not recommended, or here's what's recommended in year one. And maybe, maybe we say, you know what, let's just take a piece of this right now and see what's happening. I will tell you to your comments, most towns are doing exactly what you, most towns are using this money for projects that they never thought they would spend.
That's what I would, yeah.
People are creating dog parks that were never on the horizon.
Right, right.
Because now they consider this free money. So they're gonna do things that they never even had envisioned. Obviously, there's a number of ways to look at this. But we do have, you know, as Steve mentioned, sort of significant capital coming down. So if we could ship away some of that.
Right, right.
Obviously, that's prudent to sort of look at, you know, what we have. And then that way, it's one less thing that we're asking the taxpayers to fund. But I think some combination of maybe feel-good projects that benefit more of the community, you know, could be an option. I know, I will, you know, the Green Advisory Committee's reached out and, you know, maybe there's some opportunity to do something for them that benefits the community overall as far as green energy. I mean, so I think, you know, but that wouldn't have been something that we would have been planning for already. But again, this group, Select Board, has the ultimate authority on this. So I would, I would plan to provide a, here's everything, and then here's what's being recommended. And then it's up for you all to discuss and decide on.
Well, and I think some of the things you're sort of going between what you said and what Ed was saying is that, I mean, and I'll just say it, like Lower Village, well, we don't have any price tag on it yet, but we know it's coming. So it might not be on capital planning's list yet, but we know it was something we were trying to figure out what to do with. So, you know, that could be sort of something that's a little bit in the middle between, you know. We know it's on the list, but we didn't have a dollar amount for it yet. And maybe it's time, you know, this pushes us forward or something, but. Other thoughts on capital planning or on ARPA? Yes?
I guess I'm struggling a little bit with this plan, mostly because of sort of three things. The first is we have a few years to spend. So I hear the efficiency argument, all about efficiency. We have some time to really work this through. So to me, that is less of a concern about how quickly we can sort of move on something unless, of course, there's something urgent where you say, there's a bridge going to collapse. Reasonable to bring that forward. The second is that the Select Board itself is responsible for these funds. And that bleeds into a little bit to my third point about being very transparent on our thoughts and ideas surrounding this. I struggle thinking about a working group meeting that is not public, that is not discussing it in the way that we are now. But I like the vetting component to it. And that's the hard part that I'm struggling with on this is, you know, I'm a big fan of seeing this being worked out in public, of seeing the projects put out here. And I think that's part of the plan, you know, as you're laying out. But I'm also a fan of making sure projects that are coming to us are somewhat worked out, you know, that aren't. I like pie in the sky a little bit, but I like to make sure that we think there's really something that can be done. So I'm a little struggling about the working group. I tend not to like those processes. I'd rather actually see an appointed board, see open meeting law happen, see a board meeting and discussing projects and, and, you know, having the public be able to watch and see how this, you know, how we're planning on trying to come up with the best ideas for 1.5 million dollars. And I think that, to me, that sounds a little bit better with, of course, I would want you on that board. And I'd want you probably chairing that board because to me, that's important. And then having the other members present and truly showing the town we can openly talk about things that are how we are going to take this 1.5 million and spend it. So I guess to me, I would much prefer that style than, you know, what can be perceived as behind closed door discussions of 1.5 million dollars and sort of who's gonna get what project. I would just rather that, you know, necessarily be in public and letting people come and present to that committee and say, here's the project idea we have and really, you know, pushing it and being able to ask questions. And I'd love for that committee to come then with that recommendation of saying, you know, the Green Advisory Committee came up with this amazing idea and here it is. And we've vetted it and we've asked a lot of questions. And this is how we're sort of thinking for this board to then consider what that looks like and maybe ask some additional questions. So I guess I would prefer that, I think, Madam Chair, over sort of an appointed, you know, committee. And I know that it's an additional burden, especially on you Denise, if we were to do something like that. But I think that it's just because we don't have that time limit, I would like to see that process be how we think about spending our money in a very open way and having folks come and show us their projects. I think that's, that's great. And hopefully also allows opportunities to talk about why certain projects are fantastic. You know, I think about the Town Hall project in particular, of how it's going to be used. And maybe this money can be there and it lets, it lets each committee, you know, put their best foot forward and lets, I think, things just be more open and transparent. So that's, that's kind of where I'm struggling and trying to find what the right pathway is. But I'm a little more hesitant on this process, I think, than others.
Can I ask a question? Are you proposing that we follow kind of a capital planning approach to this money?
I think it's a fair analogy.
Okay.
So if I may, I mean, the only reason I was thinking, because quite frankly, a lot of these projects will rise to a capital planning meeting. They will have to go before capital planning. They will have to come before this board if we're, I was just trying to make it, I guess, more efficient to the people that are hearing about the projects and that are reporting on the project so that they don't have to go to three different board. Like, I mean, you know, quite frankly, I think we don't do a good enough job streamlining the budget process for something, the departments have to come to meet with me, then they meet with finance. That's why I sort of streamline with finance, that I meet with them. Because I just, I feel like, you know, we're asking so much of either our committee members and the people presenting to do the same presentation at three different committee meetings if we didn't have some way to sort of streamline a little bit. Quite frankly, it doesn't matter to me. There is no timeline unless there's things that we want to take out of the, you know, next year capital and pay for with these types of funds. But that was the only reason, was just trying to make it a little more efficient to sort of everybody that has to, like I said, present or hear on it. But it really makes no difference. At the end of the day, it's all public information anyways, and the conversations will be taking place publicly. And I, I guess the other reason was, I don't know how easily this board would vote on one project over another when people are sitting in front of them pitting their projects against each other, you know? So if this board is comfortable making those decisions publicly with everybody present, that's fine too.
This board?
Yes, this board. So if people are coming here presenting and you have to say, well, I like your project and not your project, and we don't think your project is worthy.
But what, how does capital do it then? They don't have, they don't decide on it right then.
But if we're streamlining and saying, these, these are the projects we've vetted, this is what we're putting forward, we will have already done some of that behind the scenes to say, these are the projects that we're supporting right now versus we have 10 million dollars in requests and you guys are saying, okay, this is the 1.5 that we're supporting.
I thought I heard Zach's proposal to be, there would be a screening committee, for lack of a better term, that would come up with a menu of options, perhaps with a recommended, you know, maybe prioritized. And that that would come, and they would go through the sausage making. The question is whether the sausage making will be public or private. And I'm on the fence about that. There's a lot to be said for staff-like work to be done in private. But I'm not sure that being public would hurt. So I under, so then I was kind of anticipating something at least half-baked would be brought to this board. Yes, they would have the right to say, no, this one off. But, you know, if, there would be a rationale for it. I don't see them necessarily saying, you yes, you no.
But you're suggesting that all of them come to us just with a vote of support or not support?
All of what?
All of the proposals.
Oh, well, yes, and you would still see everything that's being presented.
As long as, I'm fine with that as long as I have some kind of a paper trail of everything that's been put forward. Like, I think my only concern is you have a small group, all of these people present, then that small group is like, nope, these are the 10 that we're gonna push to you. Which they still would be doing with a vote of support or whatever. But there would still be a way to see why things weren't supported. I don't know, I, I don't, I also don't want to believe her.
Here's the downside, here's the downside to a public discussion at all levels. That means that the most popular thing and the things with the biggest constituencies will probably win out. And in this day and age, that means the projects that can, you know, gin up the most, social media and Whisper Campaign. So the question that I'm struggling with is, is there a time for a quiet discussion about, you know, we've really neglected such and such for a while? And maybe this is the chance to do something about the things that have been neglected because they are not necessarily popular. But still good ideas. I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, like I said, to me, it doesn't matter because of, I'm having the same number of meetings, whether it's a working group or whether it's a public meeting.
You won't care how many people are on social media about it anyway, but.
But I do feel that obviously there's a more candid discussion that would take place.
Right.
Um, if it's not a public, if it's publicly appointed committee. But, I mean, same meeting's gonna happen, so.
Ed, did, did you want, yeah, go ahead.
I, I think the issue though is, unlike all of the things that go through capital planning and income, those are all ultimately decided at town meeting, right? And here we are, I understand the process, the money will be spent without a town meeting vote.
Correct.
Because of, not taxpayer money, right? So in that context, you really, really want to have some sense that if it did come to town meeting vote, there wouldn't really be an issue of this wing, right? And that's the, that's the frame that I, I put my, once, but my, that's the context for my previous remarks. Is that since you're not going to town meeting, you have to kind of imagine that this is a project in our 15 years of going to town meeting, these things have always had support. That kind of project.
What, and I, oh, Steve, go ahead.
I mean, the other, the other thing is, we have traditionally sought requests for capital expenditures from a kind of a, I wouldn't say narrow, but it was, but it was a pretty well-known list of folks. And if you're talking about essentially opening this up to, you know, quote anybody with a great idea that could benefit the town, then how do we, how do you broadcast it in a way that's inclusive?
Or, or where I was thinking you were going was, who knows what kind of things we're gonna be hearing, you know, getting proposals from, whether they're well thought out or not.
Well, you know, if anybody starts asking about electric police vehicles, that's gonna have to come before capital. But you're right, I mean, who knows? See, there has to be some sort of, look, we don't want to throw anything, you know, that could potentially be a good idea for the town out. But it's a question of what, you know, we, for most of this other stuff, we have these well-established vetting procedures. And also, as Ed says, it goes before the town, right? Here, here it doesn't.
Well, and I'll just say to what Jim was saying, I think that that, to me, is why I, I'm more comfortable with having a smaller group going through the vetting process because, because the less popular things, you know, might be the most important. I mean, you know, when, as an example, when the legislature was talking about this, I'm like, why aren't we putting it all into transportation? Because we never spent enough on public transportation. But it's not popular, it's not where the lobbyists are pushed at, you know? And I just feel like we need to have some, some ability to have that sort of out of the limelight conversation, I guess, about things that, that really, you know, aren't sexy, aren't, you know, just, I mean, things like the dam and things like, you know, pieces that we know capital planning will, will have proposals for and we pass them at town meeting. But they need to be done, and this is an opportunity to do them sooner than later, to stop postponing things that really need to be done. So I, I mean, I think we could, we can find a process here where we do the vetting, we do the, you know, the conversation, or that Denise sort of runs the show on, on the, all the initial requests. And then when it comes to the Select Board, we can still do it over a series of meetings where we give people a chance to present, make comments, you know, before we make any decisions. Because I, I mean, I, you know, I do take it seriously. It's a lot of money that's not going through town meeting. How often does that happen? Never, you know? It almost all goes to town meeting. So, you know, we shouldn't be rushing it. Yeah, Grinny?
Does it make any sense to think of this windfall as an opportunity, as has been said, to take care of things that are either underserved or keep getting pushed down the list or that are not sexy? But to, to figure out a percentage that we think is appropriate, kind of like when you get a windfall in your personal budget, you know, you're like, hey, let's go out to dinner. You know, so is there some percentage that we can do something feel good that we can, we can ask for applications for some fun, completely out of the box project? And look at those in the context of some framework that we've already set. Well, let's take, I don't know, you know, 1%. And look for something fun to do with it, or whatever the numbers are.
That's definitely something to think about. I think that's a, whatever that would be. Yep, sorry, Missy, go ahead.
My apologies, I'm new to the committee.
It's okay.
And I'm learning lots of things. I guess my one question and input to this would be, are there any restrictions slash parameters slash guidelines that could be used that might filter some of the projects, given what the source of the money is? I mean, I know it's free money, but, you know, could there be some filtering, right? That could be part of the process of the submittals? That would assist whatever group is the first filtering agent in the consideration of these projects? It's kind of just my thought. Is that, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, and I think, I mean, I think that that's a possibility, that's something we can think about creating. I mean, aside from the, the 2 million has its filter already, but then this 1.5 basically does not. And doesn't mean we, what?
But it's not on top of that.
I'm sorry.
Is the 1.5 part of the two?
Yes.
I thought, when you were talking about, you said something about 3.5, so I thought you were.
Well, because we have free cash, which is separate.
Oh, okay, that's what I thought, okay. That's, I got confused, I thought we had more, okay.
No, no, no.
Okay.
So we have, we have.
So 1.5 has got no strings on it, and then the six or whatever it is, 600,000.
No, isn't it the 1.49 is the one that's going to the government stuff?
Yes, so out of, so out of the 2.1, I'm asking you to allocate some funds this evening. That leaves 1.5. Of that 1.5, 1.39 can be used for any reason, with the exception of debt stabilization or retirement. No, because I'm asking you to allocate 100,000 as part of tonight's vote. And that would come out of the revenue loss bucket, which is the any purpose. But I do, I mean, I do think that, you know, I, I was not expecting to put out sort of a open call for projects from anyone that wants to. I think obviously we send it to departments, boards, committees, sort of see what folks have. And then we can look at that and, yes, there could be, and I'm gonna say it, if someone wanted to put pickleball somewhere, you know, they could certainly submit that and we could look at it. But I, I think if we just open it up to anyone that wants to submit a project, we're gonna be inundated with projects. So I think there needs to be some strategic planning of, obviously, we should look at things that would affect the taxpayer, whether it's through improvements or whether it would be through their taxes. So let's look at some of those projects first. And then if there is 200,000 that we want to do something else with. But I do think there should be some limitations on the projects that are submitted initially to sort of meet the goals of something that does not have to come out of the taxpayer's pocket that we would otherwise put forward in some capacity.
Right. But as far as a proposal on that money, couldn't we request that there be some statement as to what the benefit of this would be, kind of in light of the spirit of the fact that it's free money? And in the spirit of what we're. kind of in light of the spirit of the fact that it's free money, and the, and the spirit of what, where the free money came from, right? So that, um, is, you know, you, so it, it allows for awaiting some of these projects that may come forward, pickleball versus, I, I don't know, you know, I don't know, I'm not that creative in, in thinking about these projects, but if you put some stipulation in their quest for these, um, these proposals, um, as to, again, keeping the spirit of the money, where it came from, how we got it, right? It may help us, help the evaluation thing prioritize, that, just my thought.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I like the way you're thinking in terms of, cuz it would help us, I mean, even if just the board, if this board said, well, you know, this is where our preference would be in this area, so that when we come down the line, however we get there, that we have some way to sort of put it in context, I don't know if that's gonna help or not, but. I mean, I still like the, I like the idea of even earmarking a, a smaller chunk for something, I don't, I, the fun, the fun money.
You know, I was kinda speak, trying to speak to what Meg said originally, cuz I don't, she was, she was alluding to something that was completely, I don't, opaque to me, so I have no idea, you know, I've sort of, some groups may have some idea about something that they wanna do.
Yeah.
And so whoever they are, you know, if it's, if it's out of the, out of the realm of fixing the dam, or, you know. I was really glad that Zach said town hall, I didn't, but I said it too, but, you know, something, whatever things are that, that like, you know, take the opportunity to just bolster your finances and go for it.
Mm-hmm.
And take care of business.
Right. Uh, Zach and then Jim.
So.
Yeah.
What I'm, I think, concerned about is that I, I'd like this board to retain control regarding sort of what filtering board exists, and I think control happens in sort of two or three ways. The first is I actually really think Missy's point is spot on. This board should be setting how we think allocation should be and provide some instruction to either the town administrators' working group, or, you know, however we, we seek to structure it, even though I'm, I think I frankly am not so excited about that structure, I think that this board should be doing exactly this. We have one point five million, how are we planning on structuring it, do we want two hundred thousand earmarked for projects that fall into this bin? Uh, the second is I think this board needs to think about how inclusive we seek to be in the application process of the ARPA funds. I think Denise raises a good point, right, an open call could be limiting, but I think we owe it to ourselves to think about, you know, what that may look like, and to make sure that we are trying to reach groups that may not necessarily find approaching us or, or seeking money from the town, you know, enthusiastic may have that good idea. So to me, it's like, how can we make sure we just hit every group, and, and maybe it's just making sure we're as transparent as possible, even including that other category that says, you know, if you're a town department, you got, you got something, you know, please, you know, bring it forward, this is the time. Uh, but I think that inclusivity is actually quite important in this context, I've seen how other towns have, you know, portioned their ARPA funds, and they have a wide range of, very wide range of groups that they've, you know, put money towards, and I actually was quite surprised, frankly, of the breadth of groups that they received, you know, that they requested and got money, like you said, dog parks to social justice money, I mean, it, it is all across the, the wide range, and I was, I was actually quite surprised, but then after your explanation of the way the funds could be used, that made more sense to me as I was reading specific categories and not, I think, looking for that process. Uh, and the second is whether we also seek to roll things into free cash for future years, I think that's also an idea that this board should consider and should be providing in that instruction as well, because you know, I think, the best of, actually, we know that there's, you know, here's the projects, and, and so also thinking about how we're gonna spend this over time, and I think what I'd like to see is for this board to come together, you know, at a, at the next meeting or two, and, and try to come up with what this may look like. And then I think that process will become clearer, and I feel like it increases that transparency of even a working group of knowing that the working group is operating within the purview of the board and coming back to the board with its findings, I, I like that a little bit better in terms of process, uh, so, so people know. Um, and I think the final thing I'll say is, um, although popular projects may, you know, come to the top, um, I also think that's what we were all elected to also bring about as what, you know, the people still want, and, and what that means, and that I think includes both sides of that aisle of the very popular ones, but also the ones that, that don't, and I like the idea of getting some guidelines around that, of trying to really think about, um, how we're going to get that neglected project and the more popular projects to really make sure we're hitting it across the board. Um, so that's kind of the process I'd like to see, Madam Chair.
Can I just add a comment before you go to Jim?
Sure, yeah.
Um, and, but I just do wanna clarify, it still has to be a legal government service or project, so we can't just be handing out money to people. Um, if someone says, I wanna fix my house and I haven't had an opportunity, I mean, there still has to be, you know, it still has to be a government service, um, and we still have to meet all procurement requirements, so again, it's not just, we can hire some, someone wants this and they can go out and buy it, there still is a pro, a procurement process that we would have to follow, so.
Thanks, Jim, yeah.
We're not making this decision tonight.
No.
So I know that I've heard enough to have enough to think about.
Okay, yeah.
And we probably have other things to move on to.
Yeah, that's, I was sort of getting, I wanted to, to sort of get this out, cuz we don't have to decide even what the process is gonna be, so, but I wanted, since we had finance and capital planning here as well, um.
We should make the motion to accept the money and allocate it.
Yeah, uh, but before we do that, um, so, um, members of capital planning or finance, any other, uh, thoughts you wanna share around the sort of next steps with the ARPA money?
I mean, nothing that I can think of right now, I'll certainly let you know if I think of anything.
Yeah, I mean, the only, the only thought I had, as I was listening to you guys, sort of hashed through the whole idea about, you know, who gets to come forward is, um, I don't know how we, how we put this, but if we're gonna, if we're gonna limit, you know, the request for projects to, you know, specific town departments, it, it sounds like we're asking somebody that has an idea to find a department to sponsor their idea, right, is that kind of what we're talking about? Which we'll be okay with, cuz I think that adds a, a certain level of.
Yeah, that's legit.
To Missy's point, there's gonna have to be some kind of vetting of these processes, somebody's gonna have to like, kind of weed through the crazy ideas, you know, whatever, so the idea of kind of having, having something have to be sponsored by a town department seems to be one way if you want, that's my only other thought.
Right, well, and I would agree, if someone wanted to build a playground, they would have to get recreation to buy into that, cuz then they would have to own the playground going forward, so, yes, I think it would have to come from a order committee or department that will then oversee either a purchase, the infrastructure, or whatever it happens to be.
Right.
Okay, so, um, and I think, um, as far as, before we go to the specific motion, I think the, the next steps will, maybe, um, if we can fit it into next week, we can have a, a little bit more discussion about, let people, you know, stir this in your heads and think about, um, you know, what, what seems like the best solution, given the, the different ideas we had, so. Um, but sort of short term, so, um, Denise, do you wanna summarize the proposal you've got, and then?
Uh, certainly, so I am, um, did I give a total of it? No, I did not, um, so I am asking you to, um, allocate six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars this evening of the two point one, um, twenty-five thousand dollars towards the public health COVID nineteen response, which will cover ongoing PPE, COVID testing, things like that, um. We've talked about PFAS, um, so I'm asking you to allocate five hundred thousand to the PFAS remediation, so we, one last thing we have to ask the taxpayers for at this point.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, ten thousand dollars towards the administrative cost of consultant fees and any other administrative costs, reporting and filings and things like that, um, and then I am asking for the sort of ten thousand dollars under the revenue loss category, which comes out of that, uh, one point four, um, as sort of discretionary funds for me to oversee, and I've gone into a bit of a, um, example. You know, we've had some issues this year with power outages, this building specifically does not have a generator. Uh, if we, if we lose power during the day, which we have, I have to send employees home, cuz we have no running water, we have no heat, um. You know, so we'd like to look for a generator to submit as a capital item. In order to do that, we need some engineering work to determine what size, what's the right kind, where would it be? So we need some funds, so, you know, I could use some of this money to cover the engineering costs for a capital project. Um, along the same lines, the parking lot of the police station, um, came in way overbid, um, when we put it out to bid, we were putting that back out to bid, um, but if that's something that comes in overbid, then what capital is already allocated, I'd like to use some of these funds to just get that project done. Uh, the same with this building, the lock, the locks and the keys and the ADA compliant doors, it came in way overbid. Uh, we're gonna rebid that, um, and see where that comes in, but this, these funds would allow us to get some of these projects that we just haven't been able to complete, done and over with, instead of having to wait to go to town meeting next year for some of these smaller balances. Um, all of these funds is just an allocation, so it's not that, with the exception of PFAS, I do think we'll use all of that. Um, but it's not that we're just spending that right off the bat, it's just allocating it so that as bills come in, we can apply it against these categories. If we don't need it, it'll roll back to the overall bucket at the end of the day, but, um, it just allows us to start spending some of these funds while we look at the bigger picture for the remaining one point five million dollars.
Can I?
Yes.
Um, when you said the discretionary funds, you said ten thousand, right, you're actually, nope, sorry, I just wanted to make sure for anybody listening
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, right.
That is really a hundred thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, a hundred thousand, yes, so six hundred and thirty-five thousand is the total right now for allocation that I'm asking.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, like, would you like to make the motion?
Absolutely, um, Madam Chair, I move that the town accept the two million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars in American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, and further to approve the sum of six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the allocations as presented by the town administrator.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just one, is it possible just to get a report back from the discretionary fund, so we can also publicly talk about having new ADA doors?
Yes. Oh, of course.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, that would be great.
Of course.
So I think I'd like to just make sure we have, happens.
Yeah, 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 that's great.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 That's unanimous, great, thank you. All right, well, thank you, finance and, uh, capital planning members for joining us tonight. Um, uh, we won't be talking more soon, I'm sure, and, uh, if you, you can, welcome to stay on for the rest of our meeting, but you don't have to. We'll be talking about strategic planning.
Thanks.
So, um, so, yeah, so the second part of our meeting, uh, way back in July, when we had our first strategic planning session, we said we would do a mid-year review of our work plan, um, at that point, our work plan was like thirty-five pages long, and then we realized, oh no, we, we give the town administrator a work plan, and then we, uh, we'll, we'll narrow down what we were working on, um, and just in case you don't remember, some of the things we mentioned were clarity on capital spending, forecasting infrastructure and money, coordinating with boards and committees rather than liaisons, um, policy review, leadership in the master plan, climate change and transportation, if it was, demand was there, um, lower village and charter and bylaw review, those were sort of the highlights of things that we brought up back in July. And I, I thought what would be helpful at this point was just to see if there's things, um, that members feel like we have not hit on at all that we should, or things that, um, you know, uh, of those things that we said we were gonna work on, you know, is there some clarification on, on what's next for our next six months? So that's, that was my sort of thought at this point for how we would sort of check in on a work plan. Any places to start?
No.
Go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, I was excited to hear about this budgeting software that is going to allow for projections, allow for kind of more transparency, um, and I feel like that's a huge, like a huge thing, because I think one of the things that we had talked about is, um, you know, as, just sort of visually being able to see, you know, five, ten years out, knowing the big projects are coming down the pipe, kind of stuff like that, so I think that's, I'm heartened to hear about that for sure.
I do feel like with the, um, you know, when we've said liaisons weren't working, and that we would try to coordinate more with boards and committees coming, having conversations with us, that I feel like we haven't quite as, had as many here as I thought we might have by now, and I'm not sure if we're specifically missing anybody, or if it's just, there isn't the need that we thought might be there. Just wondering what other people are thinking, if, um, it feels like, I, and I, I think it's partly because Denise goes to so many meetings, we don't have to feel like we're out of the loop, because you, you report a lot on, on, at least on the important key committees.
Um, so I would recommend that, and I know that this board has come up a few times, that I do think we're probably getting to the point that you all should have a joint meeting with planning and possibly zoning.
Mm-hmm.
Um, with Stowe Acres, um, we do, this board is going to be responsible for reviewing the three LIP applications for that project, um, obviously Athens Lane, the Masters Academy, I mean, there are some significant projects that will affect this board planning specifically, um, so it may be helpful to have a conversation, uh, with them, I mean, I know they meet on the same night and some of that's difficult, but, um, obviously, the Green Advisory Committee is supposed to be coming before you now in the first January meeting. Um, as far as obviously the other boards, that's up to you, but I, I do think planning is, we're probably getting around that point just because of these projects that are coming down, just for a conversation about timeline and who's responsible for what, and, you know, what this board's role is with some of those projects, um, we will talk, um, as I said, the LIP, uh, it may actually be, well, hopefully next meeting we'll have the CR that you can sign, that's already been voted, um, but the Stowe Acres project has been submitted in three sep- three separate applications, um, for the different type of housing, um, but this board will play a large role in that, so I think, you know, having those sort of conversations just to make sure everyone understands what the roles are and the timeline and what's expected is, is helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Since we often meet on the same night, can't we have a joint board cycle, just with, with fair concurrence?
Right.
Yeah, I think it would just have to be a schedule that we have late nights, right? Cuz like, we both don't have public hearings on those nights.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. Jim and then Zach, yeah.
Just very quickly, um, I have been thinking the other night that I don't think these meetings are any poorer because of the lack of liaison. What was that?
Yeah, that was good.
And to answer your question about should we be meeting with other committees more, as we now get closer to annual town meeting, every annual town meeting, there's some, there's one or two other issues besides the financial stuff that there's always the danger of the select board going in not knowing enough about.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So with, with Denise's help, if we could just, and, and they're usually planning stuff.
Right.
Um, if we could just try to stay on top of that through joint meetings, that will save some scrambling at the end.
Right. Well, and I think like library will be on the annual town meeting, right?
Yeah, I think we're gonna have tons of time to talk about the library.
Right. I don't know that we need a special meeting, but it will be one that we, we will be, need to be informed on.
Right.
Well, and I think after this week, um, I believe the expectation is on Thursday that the building committee will narrow down a project. At that point, you know, Tina could come in and talk about that, you know, because that will start the discussion of, you know, what project the building committee is supporting, and, um, you know, just so that this board hears firsthand some of that, so that could be an early January meeting, um, and then, yes, there'll be lots of discussions about that.
At that point, the big issue's gonna be funding.
Right.
Right.
From non-town sources.
Right. Yep. Yeah, Zach.
I was just going to say, um, I thought the last hour was great, and I look forward to the next one where we have joint, again, to try to, I, I like the efficiency of, of having all three of us, and of being on the finance committee last year was like weird, where you're trying to join the Tuesday meeting and then have your own meeting, cuz you're trying to get all the information, and, and I, and I agree about the, the meeting with the planning board, I, I'd also add, not only do we have upcoming things, but we have sort of our annual things that we also are constantly dealing with together as a board, and I'd love to, again, that the, sort of, how to be a good neighbor discussion of, of what does that mean for us to plan there too? Because we deal with a lot of licenses, they deal with a lot of licenses, you know, how, how are we going to approach this, that way we are working together and, and the same approach, right, and, um, and, and, you know, truly saying how can we lean on each other, what are best practices? How can we navigate, you know, this type of, of, um, moving forward, because I think although we have these big projects, we have to find a solution to lower village, and there's gonna be planning issues on that, there's gonna be licenses on that, you know, and, and I think working very closely together on, on how we can do that, not the committee, you know, of lower village, but really as two boards that are responsible for the licensing and oversight, and trying to find, find a way that we can, you know, get ahead on that planning and make sure we're being friendly to business, but also, you know, minding neighbors and, and, you know, how, how can we work together to do that, cuz we both deal with the same, the same issues.
Well, and I, and I do think that a lot of like, sorry to interrupt you, I do think a lot of their like, the stuff that they're working on right now with bylaws, and the stuff that they're gonna put forward to town meeting, is going to directly affect how we do the licenses, uh, or, or should, right? Because, um, and I do think that they kind of go hand in hand, and it would be nice to kind of hear what they're thinking and what we're thinking, um, in a meeting, I will say, it could be a seven-hour-long meeting with planning board, so I would want to go in like, very, very, like, narrow, like. Very, very, like, narrow, like, Jesse is a great presenter, and he's great at, like, giving chunks of information in a very concise and efficient way, where you feel like, great, I understand this, I have a question, X, Y, and Z. So I would say that if we, again, just having set, set up planning board and knowing how long those meetings can go, that we may not wanna try and, you know, knock all the pins down in one meeting, we would wanna really say, like, we wanna talk about, you know, Stow Acres, or we wanna talk about X, Y, and Z. And, and I think it would be great, I think that, you know, Jim would probably agree, there's been some disconnect between those two boards for a long time, and I think given all of the projects that are coming down the, like, down the pipe, that it would be really good to have some kind of unity of, you know, understanding between the two, so.
If I'm remembering correctly, it seems to me that when we talked about not liaising, that we thought that, that meeting with planning board would be not just like once a year, or, you know, we had sort of said we might wanna meet, like, let's say now-ish, which maybe after, after the first of the year now, but then another time before town meeting, and then, you know, and I can imagine just because there's so much density, I mean, like, our purview and theirs, that, that, you know, a few times a year would actually be practical, if we just sort of set that rhythm to, to, you know, on a narrow topic, not on, you know, global.
Right. Did Jesse used to report to the select board? I feel like I remembered him leaving our meetings to go and do reports.
Yes, we would. We would pry him away every once in a while on specific things, we did that.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so would the idea be, so I'm just thinking, like, timing-wise, like, would that be something that would be acceptable to this board, or would you want to have, like, the full planning board and the full?
Well, our job is to talk board to board.
Yes, you're not really communicating with the planning board if it's a planner.
Oh, great, right, right, okay, yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, then that makes sense.
I mean, Jesse can certainly provide, can be here and discuss the projects, but if the, if the expectation is to collaborate with the board?
Right. Yeah, yeah, no, that, that actually is the clarification, so that makes a lot of sense.
But what we just did, you know, the, the people that mainly spoke were Erica and Steve and, you know, members of this board, and then other people chimed in, so we had the equivalent of presenters, and then, and, and there was a structure to our conversation instead of a free-for-all.
Right, but none of those were town employees?
Right, but they're non-staff. The difference is Jesse's staff as opposed to Laurie's.
That, that's where, that's where I, 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 yeah, 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 yeah.
No, I understand, I understand the distinction, but we're still, but, but, you know, using, using Jesse in lieu of a chair, making a sort of the report, and then having other people on the, on the board or committee, you know, chime in, I think is efficient and makes sense.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be a little blunt, we're talking about the planning board, I would prefer to have Jesse take the lead in any presentation. I, I recognize that we should theoretically be speaking board to board, and the board members can be there and obviously can chime in, and I, and because he is much more focused than some of the members of the planning board are, and there is a lot of disparity, I think, in opinions on the planning board. So I would like to, you know, their staff member can present what he's doing and how he sees it, and if anyone wanna disagree, that's fine, but I just think it'll be more of a focused discussion if we do it that way.
No, I agree, but his board doesn't always follow his opinion and his recommendations, so I think, yes, he can say this is what the board's working on, but I think to have a conversation with the board members is just as important, yeah.
And that's, I would totally, I mean, I think that's, that's why we'd want the, be a board-to-board conversation, because, you know, for instance, the,
I, I would still say I wanted to be pretty focused, I would be, it's gonna happen to be like.
Because there is, I mean, we just went through, there, I wrote down, there's the six or seven different topics we could address with them, so, and from, from very big to very specific, I mean, you know, developing bylaws and what, letting them hear, when they're talking about creating a bylaw, do they know what it's, you know, just like anybody, what it's like to be on the other side, and now we have to be the enforcers, it's like, you know, the, the legislature creates a law, and now suddenly the police department had a whole new responsibility, so.
So enforcement is one of the few areas where there's been a policy disagreement, and it's a perpetual one, you're right, and marijuana was the only other serious policy disagreement I can think of, and it was a one-time thing, and it got resolved at a town meeting when they didn't do either thing that the select board or the planning board wanted to do, to do something in the middle. But, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of other issues where the planning board members don't necessarily agree with each other, and I know I don't agree with a couple of them on a few things, so it could be interesting.
Yeah, well, and I think the first step is just, you know, and, and maybe I have a conversation with Lori, like, so how do we either structure this conversation, or, you know, let's talk about the first step, which is how, how do we work better together as two boards that are overlapping on a lot of issues, and whether we have all ten of us or whatever it is in the room, or?
I'll put my cards on the table. I want the chance to ask the town planner, Jesse, from a planning perspective, what's a good idea here? Because I think that some of his board members push him toward things that are not necessarily good from a strictly planning perspective. I think I have the right to ask that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I hate to put the guy on the spot, but that's what he gets paid for, but, you know, so I, I would like him to be there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I would like to say that sometimes when an external group or, or individual meets with another group, so it can, it can, it can shed clarity, I mean, so part of, we're consciously seeking that. But, but, you know, my experience is that it, is that sometimes you have a conversation that has fallen into a pattern among a group of individuals, and when an outside influence comes along, it, it can shift, it can shed light, or, or, you know, just, just help stir the energy and, and refresh it, and that's useful, but I agree with you that we, that I would like to have the planner present, and I would also like to, I'm, to, to have, you know, the whole board or whoever's available, present. I'm wondering if it makes any sense at all to try to meet even more regularly with the planning board short spurts, like, can we take a half an hour, can we have, you know, what kind of conversation can happen in twenty minutes or a half an hour? Just have an appointment with them, or, hey, we're wondering about this tonight, what do you think? You know, Jesse, what's your opinion, anybody else have a point of view, okay, time's up, we have a big agenda for, you know? Does that?
Right, I mean, maybe, a well, a well-designed half hour is, is plenty of time.
Yeah, I mean, it's a public hearing.
On a focus.
Makes you're lucky.
Right, so, yeah, and, and the spring, clearly, there's gonna be, I mean, between now and town meeting, there's a number of times we, if we can peel off, but are they meeting three times a month now?
They meet almost every Tuesday.
Yeah, right. Well, I will.
Not tonight, though, they're not meeting.
I was gonna say, I didn't see anybody, so I'll, I'll reach out to, to Lori and, and see what we can schedule. Because I think they have a, in some ways, they have a harder schedule, just because of their hearings, but, I'll see. Other, other committees, while we're on that topic, I mean, so we've got planning, the library, sorry, anything else you feel like we're not hearing from?
I mean, do we need to hear from community preservation, or are they really their own entity, and they, they don't answer to us, so it doesn't really matter? I know they answers to us, but I'm just saying, like, it's, would it be worth hearing from community preservation? Once, I don't know. Like.
I go back and forth.
In the middle of their process, like, I know they have a process of how they go through vetting all the projects, I just feel like we hear about them, I don't know, I, it's different because it's a town meeting vote, right, so it's not, we really, it goes on the warrant, but do we have a set, a say on what goes on the warrant, it's our warrant, so like, I don't know.
So I have a, a point of view.
You have your own, yes. You have a point of view.
I think that, and I'm trying to remember, Jim, maybe you can help me out on this, I think in the past, possibly, CPC would come to the select board and sort of give a little report. The way, like, the, the assessor, the staff person comes, and we have that conversation about setting the tax rates. So, you know, you have some, somebody come, hey, what's, what's going on in your world, oh, well, we're doing this, this, and this, we got this many projects this year, they're asking for, you know, a hundred million dollars more than we have, and we're figuring it out. And, you know, a few questions from us, no discussion on telling them what to do, and thank you very much, we knew more than we did before. I think that's appropriate with them because we're, because they're supposed to be their own entity in a particular way.
I would like that.
Uh, yeah, I don't know that they've actually come before us before, but, you know, our ability to control them is, I, I don't know where we have that authority, but I think we do have the ability to influence them, and they perpetually have the question of, well, what's the town's priority here, you know, when they're facing things, and I, I do think there's an opportunity to have a conversation as we get closer to town meeting, and as the stars start to align for them, but a conversation that they want to have as much as we want to have. Yeah, I, I, I do think there's an opportunity for that.
And just to throw it out there, I do, I mean, I have talked to Vin a bit, and do plan to be more involved in their process this year, so that I could report to this board, you know, what's going on with them. Of course, then it adds a Monday night meeting to my schedule, in addition to the Tuesdays and Thursdays, but I, I do plan to be more, although I don't, I haven't seen something come out for their call for projects, and I don't know if I just wasn't included on it or if they haven't sent it out, but.
I thought it was out early.
I, I have not gotten anything from CPC, and, other than me talking to Vin, I've never been copied on anything or received any notice, so.
They used to just put it in the paper, they used to have a couple of press releases in the paper.
Well, I know last year they sent something out to all the departments and said, you know, here's the packet or whatever. But, so I don't know if, I don't know if projects have already been submitted, I, I don't know if any, I mean, I do know of a couple that plan to submit, but I haven't heard of a ton of things that are coming forward, but I do plan to be more involved with that this year.
But, I mean, I, I'm with Jim, I think it would be helpful to have, hear even what they see as, you know, their priorities, and just hear from them, again, board to board, just hear early on, sort of, not necessarily hearing every proposal that's come to them, but sort of what they're thinking about, especially knowing this year is already there, you know, there was a big, a big, a big draw already, so it's not like they've got huge amounts to, I assume, to.
I think, I think it would also be really helpful to CPC, for us, to give them some unified guidance on whether, on how we feel about bonding funds. And, again, you know, I have an opinion on this, but aside from that, I think that, well, I guess I can't set it entirely aside, so it, it looks to me as though it, it could be that going forward, there, I mean, there seem to have been more demands on CPA funds than are necessarily able to be met in a single year, and so the question for all of us is how we wanna treat that, and what happens if there's a project that has some, some need to, to happen, and so there's sort of a a natural arc of its, of its life, and it can't, it can't get funded, you know, and, and depending on what that project is and where it really falls in the town's priorities. So I think, you know, part of prioritizing is also gonna speak to, to the funding, you know, in the world together.
Right.
And that, that would be really helpful to them, like, if, even if we all decide, okay, we pretty much, the majority vote here is, you know, one way or the other, I think that would be really helpful to them, if we can have that conversation.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
However much I appreciate Denise attending their meetings, I think it's time the boards got together. We have to stop dancing around the issue that we're all responsible for Stow, for Stow's money, Stow's taxpayer money. We all, at the end of the day, report back to the people in this town, and I think it's time that our boards got together. This board has to do its responsibility of voicing up what we think are the priorities of the town. We shouldn't be shy of voting to recommend or not to recommend anything that they put forward, they can put it forward on their money, but it's this board's responsibility to ensure we're voicing up what we think is best for the town, working with Denise, making sure that we have a vision of where we think the town should go. So, in, in my opinion, I think we just, it's time.
Okay, I will put them on the list, so right now, so we have planning, library, and CPC, that'll keep us busy for a while.
Yeah. And Green Advisory, because they were already coming.
And zoning, we should have.
What's that?
Green Advisory, they're already coming.
Oh, and Green Advisory's already coming, right.
And I think we should probably try and have zoning in with planning at least once, no?
It seems like a different, I mean, ZBA, right, so.
I just feel like stuff comes up with them, and then it's like, I have no idea, like, it's, it's not, it's not contentious until it's contentious. No?
Well, they're a much more semi-adjudicatory body than the planning board is, I would be very wary of weighing in politically.
Okay.
That's just me.
No, that makes, it makes sense.
I think it's a different kind of, I mean, you know, we met with them when we needed to with the Commerce Foundation to make sure we were on the same page, and I think that's, that's the kind of time, that's when we need to meet with them, it's not like.
When we talk about, when we talk about enforcement of bylaws.
Yeah.
Because the building inspector technically, well, he, he doesn't report to them, he appeals, no, because even then he appeals with, that's semi-adjudicatory, that's exactly, no, so.
Yeah, no, I get it, I, I see what you're saying, I do, because they really are the enforcement bot, or, there is a, a legal.
They don't do much policy-wise.
Right, 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 right.
They're, they're responsive, I mean, they're reactive.
They adjudicate specific cases.
Right. The one, I mean, we didn't, I mean, Lower Village being on our list, you know, of things we want everybody to be working on, or, we haven't met with the Lower Village Subcommittee or EDIC, and that's another, sort of, those two together might be at some point a conversation, particularly if we start looking at ARPA money, and it's like, you know, is there, if we wanna have a conversation with the people that.
I don't think they even know what the charge is of that committee anymore, like, of the Lower Village Committee, it's not.
I would say, my understanding. Of, of Lower Village.
No, my understanding is their role is to report back zoning bylaw changes to the planning board on behalf of Lower Village. It's not a committee that's looking into projects, so.
No, okay.
No.
So their specific purpose was to help define the zoning in Lower Village, the planning board, to make changes.
Right.
Well, they sort of.
Like, we came up, we had a report, I mean, it still exists.
Right, you had your report. Yeah.
But quite frankly, it could be disbanded at this point, or, I mean, I don't.
And it was a subcommittee of the planning board, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Report on bylaw changes.
However, I think it would be helpful to have the EDIC in for sure. Um, I feel like I had seen a couple of things that have, people have mentioned to me that seem to rise to the occasion of a chamber of commerce, which we don't have, and.
There's like three chambers in this area, so we don't need one just for Stow, but there's three overlapping, there was one.
Right, well, and I am cra, I mean, I.
You're right.
But do you know what I mean, like, the EDIC, like, there are things, like, it was something about, like, hanging, decorating the light posts in Lower Village, which would be something that a chamber would sort of do, that maybe our EDIC does, but like, I think that there's some disconnect, and it would be nice to be able to point people sort of in those directions.
Yeah, putting the changes to the sign by law, I think.
Yeah, right, absolutely.
They did a report, and I only know this because I go to Emma's a lot, they did a report to the planning board that the planning board considered, and its next step is us, Jesse knows about that, so that could be a way.
Right, it's their sign by law that they.
Is that what it is?
And that's coming through EDIC to planning board?
It went from EDIC to planning board, and the next stop is us.
Yeah, yeah, well, the next stop would be town meeting. It's town meeting.
Planning to put it forward to town meeting in the spring.
Okay, I was given misinformation while I was getting my coffee, that's very strange.
Well, then the concern is whether.
Yeah, no, no, it, it has to go through town meeting, but it's, it's.
But if, but if the ADIC would like to come and have a conversation with us that includes. But if, but if the ADIC would like to come and have a conversation with us, that includes discussing that.
I think it would be, yeah.
Why they, that's okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Um. Yes, but keep in mind, planning board may not put forward what EDIC is recommending.
Right.
So they may come to you with a completely different proposal than what goes to town meeting, so.
Got it.
That's why it's really the planning board that, you know, we could talk to EDIC, but, um, it's still the planning board's decision on what bylaw changes they put forward.
Right, okay.
'Cause I know they did not agree with the one, that both groups did not agree with the.
Important clarification. The EDIC's initial.
A special town meeting bylaw, 'cause it was not robust enough with the changes, but.
Right.
Right.
It was sort of the Band-Aid approach.
That was the Band-Aid, right.
But in a way, I think that's the value of of maybe seeing EDIC themselves, is to hear from them what their goals are.
Mm-hmm.
And if, you know, the planning board doesn't agree, it's still interesting to us to know what, you know, what those conversations are and what's, you know, what are they saying as the representatives of the business community that, you know, if it comes to us through a filter, we're not, we're not getting the full impact of of, you know, what their concerns are, what their interests are.
Oh, no, definitely, I just, you know, I, as I assume EDIC is aware, that even if it comes to you and you all think it's fantastic, it's still up to the planning board to put it forward, to put a bylaw forward.
Right, right. It's still.
Oh, yes, right, I know, right. And we're not really in, supposed to tell the planning board that we think they should do it a different way than they might do it. But it's fine.
You can make a recommendation to the planning board.
Um, the only other thing that, uh, was on the list initially that we keep sort of floating past is the charter and bylaw reviews, which nothing's happening because we still don't have committees, because as far as we know, not enough people have volunteered. Is that right? I mean, and and both, I, this is what I always forget, charter is, goes through the town moderator and the bylaw goes through this group, it goes through us, okay? So we need to get people who are willing to step up for those things, so. 'Cause they are both overdue, not to, and I didn't even bring up the.
Um.
Yeah.
Are we putting the, I I know that there had been a call for committee members for the charter review, is that still an active open?
Yeah, it's up there.
They both open their.
Fantastic.
You just have to keep sending it around every once in a while, you know.
People are looking for a way to volunteer in the community, that's a great one.
That's right.
I always hear from people.
Well, particularly those, I have to say, or, you know, if you've been in some other town.
I think we have to package it so that it doesn't sound like a bowl of sawdust.
Bowl of sawdust, it's a, I mean, it's, think about what, how great it would be to have an updated charter. It's a living historical document, like.
No, it's true, I mean, there's, there's a lot of opportunity there to to look.
It's, it's a great thing.
Lori's long. Um, anything that that wasn't on the list that have come up for anybody that you sort of want us to think about over the next, I mean, especially now, the next six months is really, it's all about going towards town meeting, so, um, I don't know, there's other things.
Budget. No, can I comment, so since you brought up town meeting?
Yes.
So at the, um, possibly next meeting, although maybe we'll do it in January, um, I'd like to set the date of town meeting.
Okay.
Um, in talking with Linda, we, obviously, we would recommend a Saturday. Um, I think it's, makes the most sense to, um, have it on a Saturday. Um, we were looking at Saturday, May fourteenth, and then have the election the following Saturday, which would be the twenty-first. So think about it, I'll I'll put it on the agenda to vote, but, um, obviously, given that we have, um, the library project specifically that will be coming forward, that will require, um, a dead exclusive question, if they put the project forward, we'll need to have those dates set. So we started talking, um, and based on the calendar, and I think Mother's Day is sort of the first weekend, like, the seventh. So we figured we wouldn't do that weekend, we'd push it out.
Problem with weekends in May, it's a lot of college graduations, I can't make it on the twenty-first, but it's just the election, so.
That's the election, yeah. Um, you could early vote, um, but, uh, I mean, I'm open, we're open to anything, it could certainly be later, but, um. We, you know, we don't really really want it to be sooner, um, but, yeah, so we could pick other dates, that's fine. But I just think we should, um, get that set sooner rather than later, so we can start planning around, obviously, all the processes and the votes that need to happen by town meeting, or for town meeting.
Um, okay, so if there's nothing else, uh, um, we are gonna do our executive session. So just last call for anything on the, on planning. All right, so I will take a motion to move into executive session.
I, Madam Chair, I move to convene an executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three for the purpose of reviewing executive session minutes and under section, section sec.
Oh, sorry.
So, section twenty-one A six for the purpose of considering the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property and to adjourn thereafter.
Second.
And I'll take a roll call to move into executive session, Mr. Salvi.
Hi.
Mr. Burns.
Hi.
This is Frish.
Hi.
This is Bridge Michael.
Aye.
Chair says aye. All right, we are now in executive session, so.
Just give a second to disconnect folks.